Welcome to the City of Hartsville Special City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 6th, 2002. Thank you all for being here. And I will get right to it and move into the invitation and pledge. Would you mind completing this invitation please?
Hello and welcome. Thank you for this wonderful day, this day that you have made, just like all the others. Thank you for those who have gathered today to do business in Southern City. May it be done with equity, with good judgment, and with the well-being of our citizens in Carolina. We thank you for all the blessings of this season and every season. We thank you for every day. We ask you to watch over us as we go about our day, correct our business, and our life. Jesus and Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Thank you. And that brings us to the first item. Ms. Jenny Holware from Main Street, South Carolina. What do you got for us?
Okay, so this will not be done by PowerPoint. Although I do have seventy slides, but I'm not going to address every single one of them. I wanted to package it so that you guys, as the leadership team, but also the public, can better trace where we are in this journey. But today, I wanted to take this opportunity to reinvigorate Hartsville for the passion that is downtown. You've been a Main Street community for decades, but we always say that your main street program is as old as your main street director. So Matt, is how old is this position?
Three months.
Three months.
Three months.
But you have a legacy that you're building off of. And so what we wanted to do today is address some of that legacy and remind everyone of what it means to be a Main Street community. So I'm gonna walk through these. Do I have to point here? Next. Next. Okay. Okay, alright. The major approach, this dates back to nineteen eighty, actually pre-nineteen eighty. The National Trust for Historic Preservation recognized that downtown districts were decaying. There was tremendous disinvestment in the downtown district for various reasons. But what they recognized is they need to reconnect with those districts and find solutions to make those districts reactivate. And so one of the biggest things that they noticed is that you need professional management of those spaces. So much like the mall has a management team that says, hey, who do we need to fill this market? Who do we need to fill the anchor locations in this space? How do we landscape inside a mall, right? Think about that with your downtown district. So looking at all of those components, but managing every aspect of it. And so nineteen eighty, they officialized Main Street. And so we have this grassroots, community-driven, so it's not this top-down, it's all directions that support downtown's redevelopment. Next, please.
Oh, work.
Oh, it, oh. Okay, so what is different with downtown revitalization compared to industrial development? Traditionally, with an industrial side of the bypass, these two pictures up here on the far left, you have park your car, go into a storefront, get back in your car, go to another storefront, park your car, go to another storefront, and there's not that fluidity with a walkability. So in the downtown district, you park, you walk, you have landscaping, you have these relationships with your small business owners. Totally different concept. They both are needed. So we're not dismissing the bypass or your industrial development. We're recognizing that downtown is a major player in economic development. So there is this wonderful hug over the local district. So we have that local concept. So local leadership supports Hartsville. Local leadership supports Greenwood. Local leadership supports Florence. So that is your core group here at this level. Then around you is your coordinating district or coordinating community. That's me and other staff members at the state level. And then surrounding me and Main Street, South Carolina, is Main Street America. At the national level, we have a staff of, I believe, twenty-five that support the work that we do, providing guidance that we then share at the local level. So the brand mark, if you're not familiar with Main Street America, they have the goose neck lamp and then these four prongs that come out from that. So there's a four-point approach that I'll talk about here in a minute, but circled on the map is South Carolina. There are forty-five of me across the nation that help to coordinate local support and guidance. Again, we launched in nineteen eighty. What's so great in South Carolina is that Main Street, South Carolina, is housed within the Municipal Association. A lot of times you'll see coordinating programs at a nonprofit level, independent of another entity, or they're in a state historic preservation office, but we're in the Municipal Association. We're the only one in the nation that houses this one, which is pretty cool. So why downtown? Who cares about downtown? Why aren't we even thinking about downtown? Well, guess what? That's where most of your investment has been made for decades. Public and private investments, it's a physical space that has already been allocated support. You need to reactivate those investments constantly. We also recognize that this is where you blend that public and private. You don't necessarily go to the bypass necessarily every day and say, how's it going with your business? Your downtown district is more of a hub of a community. Our job at the state level is to help you in Hartsville attract residents and businesses to your community, encourage that local investment by those public and private entities, and then build community capital. Community capital means people. We want people to touch downtown. We want people to shop here, love it, and support it. We have over thirty communities.
No, no, he's watching us.
Okay, done, okay. We have over thirty communities in South Carolina that participate in Main Street. This is a pretty special group. Not everybody is ready to do the work with Main Street. Each community ranges from a population of three hundred to... I'll do that.
I got it.
Okay. That section. Each community has their own capacity. So if you have a population of three hundred, you're much more limited and you have to be much more realistic about how to maximize the engagement in the downtown district. But these are your peer Main Street communities, all across the state, in every different region. We're welcoming two more communities this January, Walterboro and Enman. Two very extreme locations in our state, but they all have tremendous assets that are going to bring to their communities. So I'm Jenny, by the way. I've been in this role for almost five years, and when I came in, we recognized that there were very few ways to participate in the network. And so what we did is we reevaluated opportunities. And so we created four different levels. Friends is the most basic kind of startup. You want to learn about Main Street? Come have a seat at the table. Then we go all the way up to accredited. This is national accreditation. Hartsville is accredited. And so this is demonstrating more than basic best practices. You are the go-to community for great leadership, great support, great activation with your programming and messaging. So at this level, there are high expectations and greater need of constant nurturing of your program. The national accreditation standards, there are six of them. We are working on the older version. There are ten of those. I feel like it's the eight-minute abs that then become five-minute abs. But they're taking those ten and truncating them into six targeted areas of focus. So if I were to go to any merchant downtown and say, tell me about Main Street Hartsville, we want every merchant saying, they're amazing, it's so great, we support each other, these are some issues that we're working on. So we want the public and the business community and the leadership to be championing it. We want that to always be this notion of, I get it, I'm so excited that we have that in our community. So there, with the accreditation process, we're going to come back in in March and reevaluate where you guys are. It's an annual evaluation. So you can't just be accredited and say, we're done, we're a great community. We want to make sure that you are constantly feeding the Main Street engine. That you're recognizing maybe there are some challenges and how you've been able to address them. If there are district expansions, why are you doing that? What makes the most sense about that? As an accredited community, you are eligible for this amazing national work called Great American Main Street. There's only one in the state of South Carolina. Can I ask a question? Who is it?
Florence.
Florence? Well, they're two-time semifinalists nationwide, so they're one of eight for the last two years to be recognized for the Main Street. Who's the one that got hands up? No, but we'll work on that. Thank you.
I started saying it ahead.
Yep, so two thousand and three, they received this recognition. We've not had a community since then. Florence is the one that's gotten to that next level. So I would like to see Hartsville begin its package or applying as a Great American Main Street. You're there, we just need to build that out. We do have a program agreement. So again, formalizing this relationship with national, state, and local. How do we best help each other? What are the expectations from what we provide? How do we nurture your program? And how do you engage with the activities that are required at the national level? We do this every year. Main Street, this four-point approach is looking at restoring values in the downtown district. Restoring every component that Main Street used to be known for. So the civic side, the civic value of downtown relates to organization. How do we partner with those other entities that can better support downtown activation? Socially, we're engaging with promotion. These are special events, but it's also how are we marketing the downtown district to others? What is the message about Hartsville's unique positioning as a destination? Economically, what are our building and business climates like? Are we missing some gaps? Are there some opportunities that we need to be embracing? And then physically, does downtown look good? Does it feel good? Is it safe? Those four points. You look at your community vision, what do you want downtown Hartsville to become? You've already gotten so much done, it's amazing. What's next? And across the board, we have these strategies that I'm going to talk about here in a minute that Matt and I have been working on for specific strategies to downtown's growth here in Hartsville. And then always thinking about, do we do it? Do we actually achieve those goals? If we didn't, why? Are we addressing those possible complications? So this is again, a comprehensive approach. Apart to this, oops. There are eight core components along with that four-point approach. There's no math today, it's just bigger concepts, but it's comprehensive again. We're not looking at only hosting events. If you only host events, that's not Main Street. You're an event organization if you're focusing better. That's not a bad thing, but it's not Main Street. Main Street is looking at every aspect of downtown's potential. Incremental, a lot of folks say, ugh, you know, we need this today. We need five years' worth of work done today. And guess what? It doesn't work that way. It is painfully slow sometimes, but it's that small breadcrumb step that allows people to say, ooh, there's some more neat stuff happening, I want to be a part of that. Self-help. So at state level, it's me. We're looking to grow our staff, but I cannot be here every day. It is a local commitment, it's a local team effort. So all of the guidance that we provide, it's implemented at that local level. Partnerships, so public-private, are there relationships that could be built out with Coker? Are there relationships that could be built out with the Byron Foundation or any of those entities that make sense in your community? Assets, we do have some folks that say, oh, we just, we need a ballpark that's going to make downtown better. Well, okay, maybe, that's something that needs to be addressed, but what do you currently have that's connected to your community, that makes sense to your community, that you can embrace and celebrate further? So if you've got Coker, not every community can make a claim to have that higher institution that is walking distance to your downtown district. That is a major asset. Quality, so everything that you think about in your downtown district must be quality. So instead of saying, we need thirty events, we need something every weekend. Is that sustainable? Do you have staff that can manage that? Do the key things well and do it with quality in mind. Let people know that say, I love it, I love the idea of having an event every weekend, but guess what? The volume of staff support to make that happen is unrealistic, so this is what we're targeting. This is how we're gonna embrace quality. Change, I'm gonna talk about that in just a minute. And the last one is supplementation. What is different about Main Street is that we have action-focused initiatives. We don't want plans sitting on the shelf. We have a lot of plans out there statewide where we came in decades ago and it just accumulated dust. These plans have to be utilized. You have to find ways to make those plans implementable. So with changing attitudes, so this is really important. It's the twenty-sixty-twenty rule, where twenty percent of the people in your community will say, oh my gosh, this is so great. Then you have another twenty percent that constantly say, why downtown? I don't care about that, what's happening? We need to be over here. And then you have the sixty percent in the middle that could go either way. You are looking at that sixty percent in the middle to jump over to that twenty percent champion. So recognizing that you have folks that are not positive about downtown, that's, you know, acknowledging that that's happening, but really looking at that sixty percent that could be engaged with your activities. So our dear friend Randy Wilson, who is coming later this month to do design review board training, he always says, the easy way to remember the four-point approach, Main Street is dope. Sorry for the sign, but it's helpful. So when people say, what is Main Street, you can say, it's dope. And explain what each one of those letters means. So design relates to that physical space. So we're looking at trash pickup, is there debris downtown? Are the storefronts decaying? Do we have boarded-up windows? Are the awnings damaged? What is it that we need to be looking at in that physical space? Is it well-lit? I know we've had some conversations about making downtown feel more intimate and welcoming at night. So design looks at all of those. I'm gonna jump through some of these slides just so we can get through for your next discussion, but these are some of the core areas with design. We're looking at those building and public spaces. So maybe you have those pocket parks that need some love. You started programming there, but there's more that could be done. You're also looking at engaging with those building owners. So they might not know that you have wonderful facade breaks. Educate them on that. Educate them on preservation, understanding that changes do happen in a facade. Well, let's talk about the history of that building and how we can reconnect to that history. The historic character of your downtown district, what's the story about Hartsville? What's the story about Coker? How did y'all get to where you are today? Best practices with planning and development, so facade renderings. If you have a storefront that the property owner is not sure about what to do with it, engage with some of our contracts to better visualize the potential without having a major financial commitment. They can see that before and after and then engage with the design concept. Okay, this is another great way. I know volunteerism is harder to embrace at a city department level, but there are, you know, your high school organizations and clubs, the college organizations and clubs, your beautification commission, helping them to come back downtown and pick up trash, add flowers to the downtown district. So there's some really cool design partnerships that can be developed. You've already done those utility wraps. And then lighter, quicker, cheaper placemaking. This can go back into, you've already looked at your alleyways and your back parking area, which a lot of communities covet. You've got the most beautiful parking, rear parking I've ever seen in South Carolina. It's lovely. Everybody wants that. But what are those other gaps in your downtown district that you can reactivate with really simple programming? Don't have to spend big bucks. These are some examples. So when y'all are looking at district expansion, you might have some of these buildings that are more industrial, nineteen-sixties. Okay, what do you do with that? Think about a facade design for this. So here we have what it looks like today, or recently, and this is a proposed coloration change. So those are the types of things to think about. Color, vibrancy amenities. Here's another one. Downtown Central, to their gateway, they had two abandoned industrial properties. This is an old auto station, I don't know if you've seen this. Today, it is a fitness center. They have recently installed some garage doors and closed off the roof area, but there's a great way to think about those spaces. You don't have to tear them down, you can think about a better use. With Coker, I love what Conway has done with the design side of things. So they have a teal alley relating to the coastal Shana Cliers. They had a big mural project and they host pop-up teal Tuesday. So in that alley, they, you know, post some neat things about, come downtown and get some neat sunglasses or a neat shirt, getting those students to visit the downtown district and the community to say, we're a college town, talk about it, coastal is ours. So there's some neat things that y'all can do here relating to design. Organization, this is that one. A lot of communities say, ah, that's not fun, I love this part. So I geek out on the organizational side. So how can we better connect with those volunteers? Because these volunteers become potential leaders, they might want to sit up here and sit council one day. They might want to be mayor. They might want to pursue being city administration level. So how do we groom that relationship so that they can be better stewards of the civics here in Hartsville? So let me address this one too. So when we say we're a Main Street community, people will be like, what does that mean? Understanding what Main Street means to Hartsville, cheering that torch and saying, Main Street is amazing. Because we're Main Street, we do this. We have amazing partnerships, we have amazing relationships, we have youth development where we bring in folks from Coker that get to observe, city council, they participate. So how are you embracing the Main Street model of why is downtown important? How are we growing that civic stewardship? So our mission, this is just an example, our mission is to revitalize downtown and make our community a great place to live, work, and play. That sounds like everybody, right? We're all saying that. We've got banners that say, we've got promotional pieces, but guess what? Y'all have this accredited component that makes you different. You're one of only five in the state of South Carolina. That tells people, ooh, I want to know more about that. How are you accredited? What does that mean? If you are not celebrating successes in your Main Street activation, it's a lost opportunity. I mean, I'm talking the simplest things. You make a change in your website, do a virtual ribbon cutting. Ta-da! Look at our website, we've actually done some new pages and some advancements in our district relating to messaging out. Building an annual report, celebrating the volunteer components, the advisory board, their commitments, and stories about your downtown businesses, the leadership team, some trainings that y'all have been participating in. Always, always celebrating the smallest to the biggest. Local leadership development, so again, volunteers become leaders. When you think about volunteerism, you can't pay for these volunteers. What happens with those volunteers? They give and they give and they give and they donate. And you can't really pay for that. But if you want to pay for it, it's basically thirty dollars an hour. Volunteers are so treasured because you're not having to make that financial commitment. There are job postings that you can develop where people in the community can say, well, how can I actually volunteer in this space? Identifying what that might look like. These are some other volunteer and organizational aspects that y'all are already working on. One thing I did want to note, this blends with design and organization. So what y'all did with that corner lot with the former gas station, dramatic. We're just talking about the grass. It looks beautiful. It looks like it's been there forever, you would never know. So there's some neat things that you can do to engage the public. Maybe there are plans, there are concepts to reactivate that space, maybe there aren't, but to get the public excited about it, you can put these temporary signs out there, just chalkboards, and say, this vacant lot can be, and you let people come by. Now, you might have some folks that put some phrasing up there that you need to monitor, you know, get your eraser out there, but ultimately, this is a way to bring teams of people to talk about what that could be. And it allows for you to say, we had a discussion, a public, open discussion about what this lot could be. That's a great aspect for grants, showing that you have engaged with some other unique approaches to that. So park that, we'll see. Resources, so you do have a bigger community, you're not a community of three hundred, but you do have limited resources, both time and money, time relating to the people. So making sure that those partnerships are legitimate partnerships and realistic to what y'all need at the downtown district. Don't ask for more than you really need and be very strategic about it. Promotion, this is the big one. What I have here is why I did it, because I don't want y'all to constantly think about events. So promotion, y'all do such a great job. My favorite picture that y'all have had are the two courtes of the downtown district. I don't know who took that, but it was adorable, well-positioned. But you are promoting this downtown district as a place for people to blossom and connect with each other. It's fantastic. We want everybody in this community to know that they're welcome to downtown. So how do we build that out even further? These are some examples. Tell the story about downtown. You've already done some of that storytelling with your merchants, but you can also do it with your leadership team. You know, why does the mayor love downtown? Why does Daniel love downtown? What are the potentials here? And then a calendar events. I include this one because people are always saying, why don't we? Let's do, well, if you capture not everybody's events, but your core events that you host, people will know that those are championed by your Main Street community. There's an open door for other events to be hosted downtown, helping community members be a part of them. That is really the next step for y'all. District assets and promotion, Coker, 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 your water park, all of these things other communities do not have. So reminding both the locals that this space is really cool, but also those visitors. Itinerary development is something that we've worked on before. When I come to your town, I know it well enough, but I do get some neat surprises. You have a lot of people coming to this community that are figuring out their own way, but a lot of folks will come here if you say, start your day with coffee here. Go to the boutiques for the next two hours and have lunch here. People want to connect the dots and kind of be guided as opposed to figuring it out on their own. So there's a way to curate that experience here. And you could do it for, I think y'all have had one where you've had a girls' weekend. I've been here twice now with my family, it's been a lot of money here. Investing in the dinners, lodging, boutique shopping, we love it here. Others would love it too, they just need to know that that's an opportunity for them. Retail activities, that's another part of promotion. So you've got these bigger events, bigger, smaller, scalable events, but you have retail activities where you want people to come into those storefronts. These are best designed in partnership with your merchants and your building owners. So not doing these activities for them, but with them, letting them lead it because does it make sense for them for these types of things that you're hosting? I think y'all have been doing some really good work with your seasonal activities. Economic vitality, this is the crux of the work that you do here, especially with downtown development. So you're repositioning the downtown district as that core location for businesses to thrive, creating that framework for them to say, oh my gosh, these five businesses have just opened in the last quarter. How do they do that? And then they get excited about that story. They'll tell their friends, there's a space downtown. In fact, Matt had a phone call this morning. Hey man, I heard there's another spot open, I've got somebody, tell me more about that square footage. That's amazing. They're calling Matt for that information. So again, you have a Main Street district, a Main Street director that's building those halls that you as council members can be a part of, but these are pointers. Scope of work, retention, so you want to love on your business district that's already here, the businesses that have made that commitment long-term, but you also want to recognize that others can be a part of this district. That inventory, what do you have downtown? How many buildings do you have? How many of them are used as civic structures? So how many buildings does the city own? How many buildings is Coker owned? How many are privately owned? Women-owned businesses, all of that kind of stuff is helpful for grant pursuits as well. So this is the data side of things. And there are some really cool promotional activities relating to economic vitality that I'll talk with Matt about later. Okay, business visitation is critical with your small business community. So having those weekly conversations, I'm not saying Matt needs to live on the streets for thirty hours every week, but identifying, you know, two hours each week to go and have these conversations. We're here for you, what are you hearing? What can we best do to support the work that you're creating in this section of our downtown district? Always visit those businesses. And you're doing that because of these business owners. They are an extension of you. They are the core of why downtown is so unique. You don't have these merchants in Florence. You don't have these merchants in Bishopville. They're here. And they are your, what do we call that? Like social media, you know, influence. They're your influencers, kind of informal but formal. So recognizing them for that. No magic wand, but there is a magic formula to Main Street. You work the plan and you plan the work constantly, every year, every day. Are we focused? Are we intentional about the work that we're doing? It's a balancing act, looking at all four of those areas of Main Street. Y'all are superheroes. Y'all are superheroes as a Main Street community. A lot of communities say, "I'm not doing that, that's so much work." Well, you're doing that and you're doing it well. Y'all are not fighting crime, you're not fighting poverty as a Main Street, you're fighting apathy. So your job is to get that positive commitment from the community and celebrate the space that they have. Day-to-day activities with staff, we've covered some of that. Building relationships internally and with each other, but also with potential partners. It is a team approach, this is a lot of work. Your leadership role, including the public, is understanding what Main Street Hartsville is, celebrating that. So say you're in a public venue and somebody's in line and they say, "Oh my gosh, downtown's teeming, so I just want to get my coffee, go." Admit that you might be eavesdropping and say, "Hey, I couldn't help hearing you say that downtown's kind of not the best place," but say, "Let me tell you about two great things that we're working on." Turn that narrative around, that's your job to actually celebrate the activities that are happening. Be a part of that. Be accountable to your program, making sure that the program is taking good steps to developing the district and learn. We want you to know the district, guide that growth, celebrate successes, and learn new tricks. So advisory board, we'll talk about that later when you build out your advisory team. How do Main Streets define and curate their purpose? We have some communities that say, "We want downtown to be great." Well, what does that mean? When do you know that you've achieved greatness? You're positioning downtown as a center of activity for day and night and all throughout the day. Talked about that comprehensive approach, we're at the end, we're at the end. Dear, 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 you know, ring the bell. So what does this look like here in Hartsville? Matt and I have been working on an overview, a one-pager basically. What is our contract for the downtown district? What are we looking at specific to opportunities in this district? And I can't read the font. But so your economic positioning statement, when we talked about what is Hartsville and how is it different than others? This could change with your leadership team, but fueled by ingenuity and innovation, Hartsville is one of the most dynamic small towns in the PD region. So we're placing you physically in a location that's identifiable. Downtown Hartsville is a hub for small businesses, industry, education, culture, and reinvention. People can get behind that. They can start thinking about, "Ooh, all these pieces are probably gathered in your downtown district." So one-pager, lots of tiny words, but they make sense because we're looking at those four points and the three red highlighted strategies are focusing on your downtown program being strong. We're looking at that, building that relationship with Coker, strengthening that relationship. And then we're also looking at the cultural district. So you've got three key strategies that make sense for your downtown's future. Very targeted, very specific. And then we have goals and objectives, and so you can track that through the time and make sure that you're on point. Not good with all that, but here again, this is an example in Wahala. Within the first six months, they put together a six or nine-page document that said, "Oh, look at what we've been doing." I was floored, I was not expecting that. But I would love to see more of that in our Main Street communities to talk about those private investments. All these things that we ask, y'all to track. How many businesses have opened? How many businesses have closed? Acknowledge that and why. What are the opportunities with sponsorships? Talking about all of that, people get excited about this. And it's kind of like a resume, it's a program resume. Value of Main Street, we support the work that you do. We don't say, "Live, long, and prosper, tell us how that goes." We're here to be a link. I will text and call with Matt and the team here, so we want to let y'all know that we're here, support reach. Nationally, over nine, the ninety-five billion dollars have been invested in the downtown districts. They tracked it. In South Carolina, we have some wonky data, I'm still digging. We've had over six-hundred-and-nine billion since 1983 invested in our Main Street communities. It's more than that, I know it is, I just need a verifier. So some things that we do at the state level to provide support beyond just phone calls and consulting. We have developed four five-hundred-dollar professional development stipends. So if Matt would like to go to national conference, we would like to support him for that. There's an application process. There's eligibility things that are related to that, but we want to lift up your local leadership to be a part of that. So if you've got team members that also want to go, it's not limited to your director. AARP, we have a partnership with them. We are offering two thirty-five-hundred-dollar grants for placemaking. So I forget the name of that pocket park next to this apartment.
The Rain Garden.
The Rain Garden. Maybe there's some programming, lights, whatever that needs to be considered for that space. You can apply for this placemaking grant that will become live in January. We have developed, I'll send this out a little bit, weshopsc.com. Careful what you ask for and what you challenge yourself to work on. This is a statewide marketplace in digital form. So this is an opportunity for any of your small businesses that are independently owned to be in an online platform. So the goal is, I hate to even use the term, but it's like Amazon for South Carolina. We want Hartsville and its small business community to be recognized. Restaurants, we want them to be part of a gift card program. You think about Christmas? We'd love to see people gift carding, we shop SC for the local businesses to be a part of. So if y'all want to know more about that, we have some of those brochures here. Also, we developed a Linktree QR code on the main page of the handout, identifying all of our directors, their programs, as well as some of these programs that we've mentioned today. And then please be a part of our awards program. Every year, y'all are eligible at this level to submit proposals for downtown merchant of the year, volunteer of the year, special projects, some other great programs. So we'd love to see some material from y'all. And then lastly, one thing that we are really excited about, next year is our fortieth. As a state program, we are forty years old. That's younger than me. But what we're building on is an advocacy program and we're building templates for the local communities. We'd like to see our community leaders go to the state house and talk with the senators and say, "This is what Main Street means to our community. These are some challenges that we're facing. Maybe there's some programming that we can be a part of." So we're building up some of that to be a part of the fortieth. If you don't fully understand all the stuff that I've talked about in forty minutes, we do have a Main Street 101 library where it's like, it's almost like a podcast, but you can sit down and listen and observe some of the concepts relating to those four points of Main Street. We'd love to see Hartsville well-represented at the national conference and again, we'll come back to the GANSA opportunity. We also have some programming that we're putting together. If anybody from your community or your leadership team would like to be a part of that, let me know. The fortieth. And that's it. Ta-da! Don't think I need to do anything. If you have specific questions, I'm able to take...
Great presentation. I'm always excited about Main Street. I'd love to see, can you send this to me or something? You know, a lot of fine print. Yeah, going out into it.
Yeah. Very, very cool. I too am a big, big fan of Main Street and the work that y'all do. It's obviously put a lot of time and thought into this, so really appreciate you coming by.
Well, I mean, y'all have made tremendous headway. Even in just a short time, your three months has become like ten years, all in a short span. So checking off the list, making sure that things aren't into and that there is this greater commitment and an understanding by the community, celebrating this work.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What do you think Hartsville needs as its next project?
Well, I'm going to reference what we've already talked about with district parameters. What does the district look like for downtown's growth? How do we better address relationships to additions of a potential growth in the district? But also the cultural district. In South Carolina, there are only nine cultural districts and that relates to arts, amenities, the museums that you have in town, the art already that you have here, your prime to be a cultural district. And so I would see that.
Ninety percent of the way there.
Right, yeah. So I would see those things that we've already mapped out. I'll let Matt address some other things that you might be thinking about.
Well, sure, and let me start by saying that we are planning to have more public meetings and we would love to have our public engaged and come to these meetings when we announce this in the next year. But like Gina said, it's really, we're in such a good spot. I had to brag on our downtown businesses, they're really taking the helm and doing cross-promotional events with each other. And that frees us up to really focus on more revitalization things, like we mentioned, more lighting downtown, more interactive art pieces, things that we can put out there for people to stay downtown longer, be more engaged, shop more, just hit the spots downtown, and then getting people more involved, like you mentioned, and the arts. Just things that are really piquing the interest of people who are coming to our downtown district. And for those who don't know me, again, I am Matt Winburne. My office is just next door in the key. If you guys have more specific questions or just want to come in chat, please do drop in anytime, absolutely.
All right, I don't know how formal this is going to be. So I do have these little handouts. If y'all want to engage, it's just basic questions. My wish for downtown Hartsville is, you can fill it in, "The best kept secret about Hartsville is..." And then "I love Hartsville because..." I'm going to leave these off at the seat here if you want to hand those back to the clerk. That would be great and this would help Matt plan the future, so.
Anything else from the council?
Well, with respect to these gentlemen's time and the staff that are here. I think we can move on. But thank you again. Speaking of the calls about interest in properties downtown, I got a voicemail. I'll explain before that on...
Pleasure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I need to clear? Well, I don't have to do it. Anyway, all right, we'll move on to comments. I know we have at least one thing, we have several, okay? You have a five-minute break, real quick? Okay, we'll stand pause for five minutes, we'll return in a minute.